Thank you everyone who's here tonight. We'll bring tonight to the council meeting order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt next agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations. Jack.
Item 4A, potentially dangerous dog hearing. Council's requested determined by hearing if a potentially dangerous dog determination issued by the city administrator, Tanya Smith-Dusman, should be maintained, modified, removed. The request for the hearing relates to a bite injury incident that occurred on December 4th, 2019. The Anoka County Sheriff's Office reported that a German short-haired pointer dog owned by Tanya Smith-Dustin was involved in a bite incident with a minor child at 21745 Fillmore Street Northeast. Since the incident was investigated and cited as a potentially dangerous dog pursuant to Chapter 10 of the city code based on the incident report, a potentially dangerous dog notice was issued relating to this incident. Ms. Dustman's dog was not licensed at the time of the incident but has received a city license as of December 5th, 2019. Staff recommends that city council conduct a hearing relating to the potentially dangerous dog determination and issue a decision regarding this incident pursuant to City Code, Chapter 10, Animals, Article 2, Dogs, Division 3, and any requirements for the keeping of the dog.
Okay, with that, we will open the dangerous dog hearing related to the address 21745 Fillmore Street Northeast. If you're here tonight to speak to council on this matter, now is your time to come forward to podium. Got you over here. If you could state your name and address, please.
My name is Tanya Smith-Dusman. I live on 21745 Fillmore Street, East Bethel, Minnesota, 55011.
Okay, thank you.
A little about me. I'm 45 years old, married, have four kids, and one granddaughter. Have lived in East Bethel for 14 years. I've been a licensed childcare provider for 17 years. I love children and animals. I have had dogs and cats my whole life. We had one dog currently before we got Bentley. We got Bentley towards the end of October in 2018. He was almost three months old. He adapted very well in our house with our family, other animals, and daycare children. He loved and still loves all people from young to older. He likes to be with people, play with the kids from fall to taking their toys. He has been a very lovable and protective dog of his people. He gets very excited when the kids enter the house in the morning till they go home in the evening. He has their schedule down. When the schoolagers get on the bus, he watches out the window till they leave, and then he knows when naptime and snacktime those kids come back. Bentley is a very friendly and unique dog. It all started as a typical day when children come into my house on December 4th, 2019. I made the children waffles and strawberries with milk. I had three one-year-old children, two school-aged children, and a three-year-old, all eating breakfast at the same time. This happened. One of my schoolagers was washing their hands, and my other one was in the living room playing on her tablet. As the kids finished their breakfast, they bring me their plates and cups, but obviously not the one-year-olds. As this three-year-old was bringing me her stuff, as I was doing dishes as they finished eating in the same room as... I was doing the dishes as they finished eating in the same room as they eat. She tripped and fell on top of the dog, is what she told me. I heard her fall and turned and said, "What happened?" Then she replied, "I fell on the dog." Her mouth was bleeding. I got that to stop with a clock, a cloth, and then proceeded to call her mom. After the mom picked her and her sister up, I called my daycare licenser to report it, called my daycare insurance, and then called 911 to report it. The officer came out, and I gave her all the information she asked and a copy of the shot record. The officer went out to her squad car and called to find out the rules for East Bethel. As she returned into the house, she told me Bentley needed to be put on a 10-day quarantine hold at my vet or with Gratitude Farms. I called my vet, and they were closed on Sunday, so we would have to pick them up Saturday at 5:00 and then drop them back off Monday morning. The officer replied, "That wouldn't work." I asked if Bentley could go to North Metro Animal Care, and she said, "Yes, that was fine." I called and Mr. Anderson, I called Mr. Anderson, and he came to my house to pick up Bentley and told me he would be able to, I would be able to pick him up the following Friday, December 13th. Mr. Anderson was kneeling in the entryway when Bentley came in from using the bathroom outside with my girls. Bentley ran right up to Mr. Anderson and was sniffing him like, "Who are you? Are you going to give me some attention?" There were no issues with Bentley leaving with Mr. Anderson at 3:00 PM. Then about 4:30, I got a call from the police officer stating that she messed up. And Bentley should never have went to North Metro, so the officer picked him up and brought him to Tammy at Gratitude Farms. I called Tammy, and she told me he was doing good, and then I could call any time to check up on him. The next morning, I called Mr. Jack Davis to ask him some questions about the situation. And he said he already read what was happening. He replied he was going to call Tammy to find out about Bentley. He called me back a few hours later and says, "We can finish up the quarantine, the 10-day quarantine at home," and gave us all the instructions with that. Tammy told Jack Bentley was a good boy but skittish. My husband and girls picked him up, and we finished up the quarantine at home. My daycare children just didn't understand why they couldn't see or touch Bentley. I tried to explain, and one of my little persons said, "Why did she lie? He wouldn't bite or hurt anybody. He loves us and wants to be with us." So they started a countdown on when they could touch him again. The dog, Bentley, and children were very happy to be reunited again on Monday, the 16th of December. Thanks for your time. And I do have pictures of him with, from the young to the older, and with the daycare kids, and with my family, and just the different things that you can do to the dog.
Okay. Are there any questions for Tanya as long as she's up there?
Were there any challenges as far as what you asked and the child told you what happened? Were there any challenges to that, accuracy or inaccuracy?
Well, she's a three-year-old. And some three-year-olds tell the truth, some lie, some, you know, you... But my one-year-olds, they can't. You know, I wasn't, I didn't specifically see it happen. My back was to her. So, I mean, I told her, or I asked her what happened, and she said she tripped and fell on the dog. I didn't hear anything besides her fall. So I asked her twice, and she said she fell on the dog.
Was this in the same room you were in?
Yeah, they were sitting at the kitchen table, and I was in at the sink. So dining room and kitchen, it's all connected.
You state that she said she fell on the dog?
Yes.
Not that the dog bit her?
She said she fell on the dog.
Just fell on the dog, okay. Any other questions?
I'm just not sure why this falls under the potentially dangerous dog because all these definitions say unprovoked, and in my mind, it's provoked because a child fell on the dog and possibly hurt the dog, which would have caused a reaction from the dog. And if this dog has never had any problems before, I don't understand why it's a potentially dangerous dog. She did all the right things. I think this shouldn't even be up here right now.
Well, that's why we're here, to determine whether it's provoked or unprovoked and the conditions that led up to staff's determination. And we're just, we're here to either uphold it, or rescind it, or modify it, so... Okay?
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to jump all over you there. Do you notify the people who are bringing their children to your daycare that there will be animals with their children?
Yeah. I do have some daycare parents here, too.
Okay.
But they know, I say that right in my, right in my contract, that I do have one, one cat, two dogs, whatever, and they're all up to date on our shots because you have to have them.
No, and it's, you know, I mean, you know, it's kind of skirting, you know, another government entity, which is the state of Minnesota, which regulates, you know, daycare rules. And therefore, I was asking about, you know, that is one of the requirements, is that you notify parents that, you know, they will, there will be animals in the home. And it also says that, you know, children can only handle the animals with supervision. Again, that's not really what we're here to decide today. I just want to make sure that you are aware of that. I'm just, it's kind of hard for us to kind of really, you know, kind of come to a conclusion here because it sounds like you had your back turned to the situation and didn't really see it. And we don't really have any corroborating evidence as well as to what actually happened, which makes this, you know, rather a tough thing to, you know, decide. So I guess, you know, I'm, I'm, I just am curious as to how, you know, we can feel comfortable that, you know, this isn't going to happen again.
One thing I forgot to ask. I've read these reports a number of times, and I haven't seen anything about crying. Was it, was, I, there's an abbreviation, I think, for a child's name. Was she crying?
She was. She fell, and then she started crying, and I said, "What happened?" And then she told me, and I was holding it with a cloth to get the bleeding to stop. But it didn't take long for her to stop. Because sometimes when they cry, you can't understand them anyway.
Sure. What did the dog do after this happened?
The dog just went in the other room, in the living room. Because we live in a four-level, and I'm, it's like the dining room, the kitchen, and then the living room is right there, and he just went over in the living room.
There was no barking?
There was no barking, there was no growling, there was nothing.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Can I have other people speak if they want to?
I'm sorry?
I said, "Can other people speak?"
Yeah, that, that'll be next, yeah. If there's anyone who has a direct interest in this, yeah.
Hi, I'm Sigrid Smith. I'm Tanya's mom. And I have seen Bentley reacting with our dog. We have a dog, we have two cats, and Bentley has come over to our yard, and they played in the house. And the cats have been there, and Bentley has played with our, with our dog, Bailey. And our dog is a three-year-old rescue dog. So the dogs play on the outside, and they come in the house. And the cats, I have two cats, you could almost call them little dogs. They're like 20-pounders. They walk around with the dog, no problems. I have my grandchildren. I also have two great-grandchildren, and they are interacting with the dogs, including Bentley. Now, they're at the age where Meredith is little over a year, so she's 12 months, and Greta is nine months. So Greta is crawling, trying to walk, and Meredith is walking, and I have, and the dogs are...
We need that microphone, thank you.
Okay, I'll go like this. And the dogs are interacting with the kids, and the kids are walking around the house and with the dogs. So there is no, you know, the, the kids will pick up the dog bone, you know, with the junk in it, and, you know, and the dogs watch them, and then they drop, and then they grab their bone. They do not, neither does Bentley or Bailey take anything away from the kids. So they're, they're gentle dogs. Not only that, but we have taken and gone up to the lake. We have a lake home up at South of Reamer. And up there, we have many people who come, and they bring, one has a Great Dane, and one has a Lab, I believe it's a Lab, big dog. And the dogs are all interacting. And there is no growling, there's no barking, there's just playing and catching a ball, and the kids are running around. So there is no viciousness that you can see, you know, where dogs get together and growl and fight and whatever. But they don't. They're playing with the kids, and they're just interacting and like you would maybe see dogs at a dog park or something like that. But I don't, I don't see Bentley as a, he's just an average dog who, you know, it's an accident. Now, I got a question or a thought that maybe you can think about. If you were working, walking with a good friend, and especially right now, it's kind of slippery out there, and you're walking with a friend, and your friend tripped, and you fell on top of the friend, you fell on top of him, and by accident, sad to say, your friend, you know, because you're maybe bigger than him or whatever, your friend ended up hurting themselves, a broken leg, a broken arm, broken finger, broken nose, or whatever. So was that an accident, or are you a vicious person? Do you know what I mean? Does that make any sense? I don't know. But it's a food for thought. I mean, it happens. Accidents happen, and that's just, that's the way it is. Any questions?
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you. You state your name and address, please.
My name is Catherine Brevek, and my address is 953 215th Lane, Northeast, East Bethel, Ossiter, 55011. And this is my daughter Eva, same address, Eva Brevek.
Okay.
Eva has been, she's been a, Tanya has been her daycare provider since she was three months old. And she's actually going to be eight tomorrow. So Eva and my 13-year-old son, who I think he was five at the time, have been going to Tanya since then. And so we've, we knew Tanya had, initially she had a very big, I don't know what kind of dog it was, when we first started. And so she's always had dogs, and the kids really do love those animals, the cats and the dogs. And Bentley even, I mean, Eva is always playing with a dog, and I see him with all the daycare kids every time I'm there. Even she loves going there to play with the dogs so much that sometimes when I'm home and not working, she goes to Tanya's house. That's how much she loves it over there. So all the kids really do love the interaction with all the pets in there. And unfortunately, you know, things happen, and, but I think, you know, it was just an accident, and Eva was very, very heartbroken, especially the 10 days that they knew Bentley was at the house, but they couldn't touch him. And so every time I drop her off, there's always a countdown. She would tell me everything that happened, how sad Bentley was, and they would all stand and be looking at him. And so I just thought I spoke on behalf of our concern and the love that we have for Bentley. And Ms. Eva wants to talk to him.
You can pull that down. Here you go.
He has never been biting other kids until this time. He has never bitten me. He was very nice to the other kids. He liked to lick them and sometimes take the toys.
Thank you, Ava. Thank you.
You state your name and address, please.
Erica Serino. Address is 2129 261st Avenue Northwest, Dyessanti, 55040. I just want to make a point that since this has happened, not a single parent has pulled a single child out of care. Whether or not it happened, I don't know, but I just, I've had my daughter with Tanya since she was, I think, nine months, seven, nine months, something like that. And she's five now, and I have a three-year-old, and I just, nobody, none of the parents that are there felt that our children are a danger. I think if we did, we probably wouldn't have our kids there still. And every single one of the kids are still there that were there before.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kylie Dussman. I live at 21745 Fillmore Street Northeast, 55011, East Bethel, Minnesota. I am Tanya's daughter. My precious dog is Bentley. He is one and a half. He's a German short-haired pointer. He is a gentle, loving, courageous, and sensitive companion. He's a very friendly dog. When you get home for an hour or 10 minutes, he showers you like kisses, some seat... Oh, he showers you with kisses like he hasn't seen you in a week. He loves everyone, everything, and he adores kids like no other. He knows when the daycare kids leave and get to our house. He loves belly rubs. I'd trust him with my life if I had to. Every single daycare kid loves Bentley like no other. He has been one of the biggest blessings in my life since we first got him on October 22nd, 2018. He can see things, he can sense things most dogs can't. If you're sad, he'll lick your face. When you're tired, he'll curl up into a ball between your legs and fall asleep. I've never seen a dog afraid of a laker pool as much as Bentley was, but when you tell him it's okay and that he can do it, he loves it. I've never seen a dog that loves swimming as much as he does since. He could swim for hours and hours straight without stopping. He'll float on the floaties, or he'll swim and get the ball and bring it back to you 100 times over again. He loves up north. He loves running loose with all the other dogs. He loves learning new tricks. When Bentley got taken away December 4th, 2019, I got home from school, and my mom greeted me by the door crying. She said that I'd have to say goodbye to Bentley for a few weeks. I never asked why, I just broke down into tears because I've never been away from him for more than two days. I ran outside with Bentley, my other dog Coco, and my sister Kassandra for about 30 minutes before Mark came to pick him up. Bentley greeted Mark at the door as he does everybody else who's ever walked through that door before with a shower of kisses. I helped Mark walk Bentley out to his truck because Bentley didn't like rides. I put him in the kennel in the back, gave him a kiss, and told Mark to take good care of him for a few weeks because I love that dog. He promised me he would. I thanked him, walked inside, and locked myself in my room for hours. I went to practice as I do every day. This day was different. I had my hood up and cried the whole time. During sprints, I would pretend every line would be Bentley because I missed him so much already. I felt as if I'd never get to see him again. I felt lonely, scared, and afraid. I wish I was there instead of him because it was so unfair for him to have to be taken away from everyone he knew and trusted. It was a very hard day. I got home from school the next day. My mom told me to put my shoes and jacket, my shoes and jacket on because my sister and I were going to get Bentley from Tammy's house. I jumped in the car with his leash. When we got to her house, her husband went to go get him and had us meet him in the driveway. Bentley passed my dad and sister and ran right to me because he was so excited. He showered us with kisses, and we ventured back home. He couldn't see the daycare kids for two weeks. Every single kid counted down the days till they were allowed to pet him again because they love him just as much as everybody does who's ever met him. As the days passed on and counted down, they could pet him again, and I've never seen his little tail move so fast full of happiness. He is one of the best dogs I've ever had. Thank you. So any, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else here tonight to speak on this?
My name's Lucas Pavlis. I live at 22365 Seventh Street Northeast. Tanya's been my daycare provider for like eight or nine months or so. I've got two kids that go there. One's four and one is six. The six-year-old goes to school, but on days they don't have school, he goes to Tanya's house. And my four-year-old drew a picture because he was afraid that somebody was going to take Bentley away. He's not a dangerous dog. Any dog that gets landed on is going to be surprised or whatever if you nailed it on the head. Every time I get there, he comes down and greets me at the door, and we all just walk into Tanya's house when it's time to pick up our kids or drop them off because there's so many of us. But he, he'll, he'll come right up to anybody, and he listens. He'll sit and, and just sit there while you're petting him or whatever. He likes belly rubs, whatnot. He's, he's a good dog. I mean, we were all told, and we met the dogs before we even brought our kids there. So like when we were like interviewing Tanya to see if she was the right daycare provider for us, we got to meet the dogs, and they're, they're great. They're great dogs, so that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Mark Anderson. I'm the director at North Metro Animal Care and Control. I'm here today at the request of the family that owns this dog to talk a little bit about my interactions with the dog. We were called out there at the owner's request. Oh, by the way, I just wanted to say this, too. Jurisdictional problems notwithstanding here, it was not my intention to follow anything up. Lady asked me to come and pick up her dog.
That's not of issue.
She said it was good.
That's not of issue tonight.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, and I apologize for it, okay? So I arrived at that house about, on Fillmore, about 3:00 in the afternoon, some eight hours after the bite occurred. I don't have any information about what happened with the bite or anything like that. However, on entry to the home, I spoke with Tanya. I spoke with some of the other kids that were there, and they let Bentley in so that I could take custody of him. Bentley came running right up to me. It was very friendly. I kneeled down. He licked my face. Very friendly dog. We were able to get Bentley out to the car with no problems, no difficulties, no barking, no whining, none of, none of that. One observation that I did make when we got him back to our facility was that when I got out of my truck, I could hear his tail banging back and forth in the aluminum animal control box in the back. He was happy to get out. He was very, very friendly. He was very obedient. He was good on the leash. Got him into the facility, got him set up in a cage, no problems. We went through all the initial check-ins. We didn't observe any kind of behavior that would indicate to us that he was going to be problematic for us or our staff to handle. And we did a brief evaluation on, on his current temperament, which we did, which we listed as friendly and calm. I guess I don't have anything else to add other than that. We didn't see any issues with the dog as far as any kind of aggression, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions if anybody has one.
Okay. All right.
No questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Gimple, 22359 Baton Street, East Bethel. As you heard, Bentley actually got moved around that night. So he, he went from a stressful kids crying in his own home over to North Metro and then to my place. And he, he really was, he really is a very friendly dog. And, and as you, I mean, I don't even want to follow up Eva because that pretty much said it all. We shouldn't be here for this dog. This was, this was an accident, a big, an accident. I don't know that anyone even said it was a bite. She might have just split her, her lip open, so. The, the, there was, the dog is a very good dog. I didn't see, there were no issues at all when it was here. And actually, you guys let her quarantine on nine days at her own place. And as you heard, she even followed that protocol and made sure all the daycare children, which actually is really impressive to me that she did that. You have that many kids in your daycare, and you keep your dogs separated from... You have that many kids in your daycare and you keep your dogs separated from, from that was, I would say, let's, let's skip this one. It was a good dog.
Okay. Any questions, Tammy?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I hear a cellphone.
I'm sorry.
I've been waiting years to say that to somebody, so. Sorry.
I'm Cassandra Dussman. I live on two one seven four five Fillmore Street, East Bethel. We've had Bentley for over a year. And for as long as I can remember, anyone that's ever seen him has said how much of a pretty boy he is and how good he acts. For as long as we had had Bentley, every daycare kid has loved him and our other dog Coco like they're our own pets. They all love him so much and love to give Bentley belly rubs and they love seeing him all excited when they walk through the door. Granted, Bentley loves Kylie the most in our family. We so love him to death. Our family was used to one dog going up north, so when we bring, we started bringing him up there, it was interesting to watch him adjust to the settings. At first, he was terrified of the water and wanted nothing to do with it, but after throwing the ball a hundred times, he finally started jumping in and loving it. We slowly introduced him to the pool at home and he loved it just as much as a lake. As time went on, our family couldn't picture life without Bentley or any of our other animals. I personally got to see the kids more and more attached to him because I was home all day because I do PSCO, so I was only gone two days a week for a few hours. So, it was really interesting to see them be so attached. When every kid got back from school, all I would see is Bentley just wagging his tail because he was so excited to see all of them. He greeted them with a lot of kisses and licks because he missed them all. That day that he got taken away, it was just a regular day. I went off to my PSCO classes and I got home and got told what happened, and my heart truly broke. I got told there was a possibility that he would get taken away, and my heart shattered into pieces. I had to go to my high school classes and pray that the nightmare of him getting taken away would not come true. I had to fake a smile while driving my sister home because she knew nothing. And when we got home, my mom was crying and told both of us that my nightmare came true. I never cried more in my life than I did in that moment. My heart broke for my sister because I was her baby. And my heart broke for my mom because without a doubt, she's the strongest woman alive and she had to deal with all of that in less than five hours. Soon after, Mark came and got him, and my heart just kept breaking because he was going to be gone for ten days. Bentley would be locked up in a place that is unfamiliar and we knew he would be scared. But the next day, we got blessed with the best news. He could come home. On day two, he got released. I never have been more happy to hear that. We could bring our dog home. All the kids were counting on the days till they could pet and touch him again. While he was locked up for the rest of the ten days at home, he would see the kids get home from school, and one little boy said he couldn't wait till he could pet him again, and all you could see was Bentley's tail wagging because he wanted to go and greet them. Finally, the day came where the kids could pet Bentley, and he was excited to go up to all of them and give them kisses. Bentley is the gentlest dog and he loves my niece and gives her kisses even though she's nine months old and pulls on him. Bentley loves all kids, humans, and animals, and he's the best dog a family could ever ask for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hunter Dussman. I live on two one seven four five Fillmore Street. My mom is Tanya. A little bit about me. I'm an avid outdoorsman as well, as well as an athlete. So, December fourth, when this went down, I was actually down in Minneapolis for the Minnesota Football, All-Star Football, or All-Star Game. And I about jumped through the phone when I found out about this because I couldn't believe it. When my mom called me, I did, I had nothing to say. I thought I was dreaming, more like a nightmare, so to say. So, I unfortunately missed when he was taken away and when he was brought back because by the time I got home, he was back. A little bit about him. He is, we've had multiple dogs in our household, multiple dogs with the daycare kids since my mom has been doing it. And I've never seen so many little kids attached to one dog in my life. There is multiple kids at our house all the time, twenty-four seven, dang near. And they all love him, every single one of them. I probably would assure you that they love Bentley more than they love their own dogs because they're with him so much. And every time a parent comes to pick up or drop off, Bentley does the same thing every time, runs down the stairs, gives them kisses, and basically walks the kids upstairs and just wants love. He is by far one of like my best friends of a dog that I've ever had. And I think everybody has done a good job of saying who he is and what he's about. But he is by far the greatest dog that I ever had. Any questions?
Thank you.
Charles Dussman, live at two one seven four five Fillmore Street Northeast. The father, the husband. I just wanted two quick points. My wife does a wonderful job as a daycare provider. There's nothing ever been, no calls, no nothing. She's fabulous at what she does. And the other thing is, the only thing that dog is dangerous of is being spoiled. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Abda Nelson. I live at two three six three one Saylor Street.
I'm sorry, can you speak up just a little, pull a microphone closer to you?
Sorry. I'm, my name's Abda Nelson. I live two three six three one Saylor Street Northwest, St. Francis, Minnesota, five five zero seven zero. I'm dating Hunter, so Tanya's son, and because of this, I spend a lot of time at their house. During the summertime, it was nearly every single day. And when I first met Bentley, it was sometime last March. He was still considerably young, well under a year, but he instantly won my heart. He has such a loving and happy personality, I couldn't help but love him. The second I walk into the house, he's usually the most excited to see me. Greets me with his tail wagging as fast as he can make it go and just wanting to be pet. Bentley loves people and always wants to be around his family. Before him, I have ne, had never met a dog his size that loves to just sit on people's laps. I remember nights when I would sleep over, Kylie told me, "You are in Bentley's spot", which I didn't think much of at first. Bentley didn't seem to care. He actually did not care at all. He would just sleep completely draped over my legs. I would wake up and do my best to move him off of me as he is sleeping on his back with his legs up in the air. Then he would finally open his eyes just to watch me push him around without a care in the world. Something that really speaks to his characteristics is his ability to sense someone's mood and act accordingly. There have been many times that I am just not in the best mood and he will come over to me, tail wagging, asking for some pets because that will just fix everything. From the eleven months of knowing him, being around him, and playing with him, he has never displayed anything but love, energy, and a gentle demeanor. I have even brought my dog over to play, which at first worried me slightly because my dog is old and overweight and she's a golden retriever. So, I wasn't sure how she would handle a vastly different energy of a one-year-old dog. But Bentley was nothing but sweet and gentle to my old, slow dog. He didn't jump or get too rough with her. He knew how to act. I think for a dog, Bentley is exceptionally well behaved, no matter the situation. There was also one time that Cassandra and I decided to put his big floppy ears into scrunchies. We styled them both on top of his head and an ear in the scrunchie. He was shockingly okay with it, aside from wanting to play with the scrunchies. Bentley is just such a submissive dog, he will go along with basically anything. Honestly, the way I would describe him is like a rag doll. You can mess with him all you want, push him around, play with his ears, literally anything. Time after time, I've watched the daycare kids surround him, petting him in the way kids do, kind of on the rougher side, but nonetheless, Bentley just sits there waving his tail, happy to be getting extra attention. He is truly a good, kind, gentle, and trustworthy dog. He always has been that way, and I cannot imagine any situation that would change that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else tonight?
I'm Emily. I'm the mom of Autumn.
I'm sorry, can you pull the microphone closer to you? I mean, Jack, you turned up, turned up a bit too.
I'm Emily. I am the child's mom that got bit. And all I have to say is that she definitely got bit. I believe you all seen pictures already, right?
The pictures?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we have those.
Okay. And then they can all go on and on about how good the dog is with the kids and stuff, but it might have been an accident, but what if this accident happens again? They're talking about all the kids petting it and all this and that, but she was walking from the table to the sink to put her bowl in the sink. One thing, why was the dog in the kitchen? Because if Tanya didn't want an accident to happen, that's asking for an accident if the dog is at the table begging or anything while kids are eating. And then whether she tripped and slipped or whatever, say, my one-year-old, what if she was crawling and pulled the dog's tail? Babies do that. They don't know better. The dog should know better than to bite a child, an innocent child.
Okay.
So, there's no, there's still a possibility that the dog could go and bite another child if the child pulls the tail, if another kid trips and falls on the dog. If anything happens that the dog is not aware of happening, what are you going to say? That the dog's not going to bite again?
Okay. Any questions, Emily? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Samantha Plant. I live at two zero two seven zero Naples Street, East Bethel. I have a background with a dangerous dog. It's not pleasant. Bentley does not show any signs or any characteristics of what a dangerous dog does. My child has been bit by my previous dangerous dog, and this is not, this was an accident. It's, this is what dogs do. If you step on their foot, they're going to go right at their foot. What was that? That's what dogs do. This is, dangerous animals are, have very different characteristics, mannerisms. This is not, this is, this is insane. This was an accident. Accidents happen. Yes, a child may pull on a tail. The dog is going to know better that a child is in its surroundings. When a child falls onto a dog, they don't know what's coming. They don't know what's going to hit them. This is ridiculous. This, that's what I got to say. I just, I have that background with the dangerous animals, and that's a nightmare. I'll tell you that. I've experienced it. It's not fun. I understand it sucks to have the child be bit. That's, that is torture in its own. But this was an accident. It's not, he's not a dangerous animal. He's a very loving dog. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm a daycare parent too, by the way.
Okay.
And my daughter just loves Bentley, which, and she was previously bit. So, she's, for her to not be scared of this dog kind of tells me that I got nothing to worry about, you know?
Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
One more. Okay, I'm sorry, can you come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address?
My name is John Smith. Live at two two eight six one Grau Street Northwest, Bethel, Minnesota. And I'm Tanya's father. But I would like for you each to see these pictures.
How about if you just set it up right in front of those chairs right there? Oh, no, right in front of the chairs. We can't see it. Yeah, that'll work. Okay.
There are some pictures on there which I hope you can see that the kids had put stuff in Bentley's ears. I mean, they, they were just toying with him and, and doing that, and they've done other things with Bentley. And, and he's never had a problem with barking or, or biting anybody or responding to any of that stuff. I agree with what you said, what you started out with. Someone startled that dog. And the reaction of a, of a dog, of us, even of us humans, if somebody knocks you over, like my wife said, you're going to turn around and you're going to say, "What'd you do that for?" You might take a swing at somebody. But my question is, does that make you a vicious person if you take a swing at somebody? The dog just, he reacted because he didn't know what was going on. He didn't know what happened. So, but that, a lot of those pictures say a lot of, of the whole story about Bentley. I mean, he sat on my lap with his tongue just hanging out, just enjoying it, and he does that with everybody.
Okay.
So, I'll leave the pictures there and.
Sure. Maybe, can you shift it over just a little bit, sir? Can you shift it over just so it doesn't block the aisle? So, yeah, thank you. Anyone else here tonight on this matter?
Jeff Jordan, four oh on Union Street. Well, I guess I didn't know the dog personally, but for a kid to have to go through this over a dog, this is pretty ridiculous. That dog's lucky that I didn't come over and.
Sir, are you, are you a parent of daycare or?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Autumn's dad. That dog does not deserve to live. Blood is going to be on your hands and your guy's hands if you let it walk. Because that kid will, or that dog will attack again.
Okay.
Everyone, they all talk about how our kid fell on the dog. She didn't see. There's been other incidents, a kid, another kid bit her, my daughter. She didn't see it. That's always the story with her.
Okay.
But they sure do paint a good, pretty picture of it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, I think I can assume by your tone that you have removed your child from care?
Yeah.
From Tanya?
Yep.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Anyone else here tonight on this? Not to rebut anything, I mean, okay. Additional?
Just regarding that one topic.
No, we're not going to dispute everyone, so. Any other persons wishing to speak? Okay, with that, we'll close the hearing. Before we start discussion, just so there's some understanding of why we're here, it was an incident that involved a dog and allegation that someone got bit. And the sheriff makes that determination when they arrive, and that information comes to the staff, and the staff makes a decision whether there should be a determination of potentially a dangerous dog, and that brings it to counsel for a hearing. So, the idea here is that it's sort of a quasi court, I guess, in a way, in that we're, we take, you know, the evidence that the sheriffs provide us, the testimony from others, and, and then counsel makes a decision on what to do next. So, that, that is why we're here, whether or not, regardless it looks like an accident or not, because there was allegations someone got bit. And, and then the, the person, the family who got bit filed a complaint. So, that's, that, that's what brings us here tonight. So, with that, counsel?
This is, something happened. There's no dispute about that. The child was bit, scratched. In my opinion, there's no dispute. One, you try to think, well, what's, what do you do here? Who's, who's going to split the baby? And I'm trying to think of things to consider. So, and what I end up with is my own, I have three daughters. When they were young, they're friends. We had a half-white German Shepherd, half-Alaskan Malamute. And it did, it left teeth marks. But my daughter says, "Well, we were downstairs, it was dark. Angie was sitting on him and when she started poking him in the eyes, he wouldn't take it." So, there's gentle dogs that can be pro, prodded. One, one thing that comes out and is means something to me, usually, my experience, almost universally, a three-year-old has something like this happen and. And naturally, we're going to check him out. We're going to ask, what happened? Nothing. Standard answer is nothing. Nothing. I didn't, because they're afraid? And they're going to say, no, no, nothing happened. I didn't do anything. And that's not what happened here. And that means quite a bit to me. As far as the dangerous dog, we haven't seen or heard any evidence of a propensity towards aggression. At all. None. And, and like it or not, you have two parties involved with something. I used to call that shared responsibility. Neither one intended to do anything to the other. Something did happen though, so what do you do about it? There's no propensity towards danger, towards aggression. And I guess I'm inclined to believe what the little girl said. Contrary to what all the little three-year-olds I've ever known would say. That's it for me.
I think, I mean, the, obviously, something happened to the child. And what, we have the benefit that the audience doesn't is we have the pictures of when the child was brought into the hospital. The, so something happened. To me, it would seem like a, a, a reasonable possibility is, is the child fell. And the dog's going to react. Whether the dog's reacting to the child or it's just reacting. And, you know, I look at these photos, I don't necessarily see a bite. I see a big scratch. And just with, you know, the way the injuries are on, on the child. And so if, if a dog's going to attack, they're not going to attack with a paw. They're going to attack with their mouth. And so I could, I could see this just if the child fell on a dog and, and the dog scrambled. It, it's like it has been a paw to the face. So, so something happened and then it comes back, back down to whether it was provoked or not. I mean, that's, that's what's key in this ordinance is, is, you know, was it, was the attack unprovoked? And to me, it's very clear in this case, with the child falling on the dog, it's, it's not intentional. It wasn't an unprovoked attack. I mean, the dog reacted to something that happened. And I, I'll say from experience, I had something very similar happen when, when, when my son was about a year and a half. And fell on my lap. First thing, right on his hip, and the first thing he did, the dog whipped around. Didn't touch him, but that dog barked right in his face. And, and again, that dog was as friendly as it could be too. And so any, that can happen to any dog. And, and I think also, you know, to the parents that have their children in this daycare, another daycares that have animals, others do too. I mean, you're around animals and whether it's your own pet or someone else's pet, there's always that small risk. And, you know, everyone needs to go into understanding. It sounds like it's part of the daycare contract that parents are made aware there's animals. And so it's, I, it doesn't seem like anybody's putting somebody in, in, in a situation of high risk. But it's something that can happen, so. Yeah, I think that, that's, that's what I have to say to it, so. Anyone else?
Just to add a little bit, this is, this is very difficult. It's, we have two sets of people that are affected. Combination of sad, injured. What's going to happen as far as what has happened and why did it happen, et cetera, with your, your perspective and, and the opposite perspective. This is tough. I don't know if anybody else can think of anything better as far as. And one thing that, another thing that strikes me that is significant as far as concern about the animal. However many people are daycaired, it doesn't sound like, I don't know how many, but it doesn't sound like everybody's just quit. That they're concerned that my, my kid will be next.
Is there any other discussion?
I just, I just want people to understand, you know, how serious this is and, and the decision that we have to make. And, you know, this is, this is a serious charge. I mean, we can't, you know, that, we're not taking it lightly by any means. And, you know, there is a process involved that we have to take in trying to decide what to do. And, and there are many options for us to put certain stipulations on a dog that we may find to be an issue or potentially dangerous. And when we're looking at those things, you know, we really have to try to set aside our emotions about how we feel about dogs or friends and neighbors and, and so forth. And, and really kind of take a look at, you know, the facts. And, you know, from the descriptions that we have here, the report is that, that, you know, the child fell on the dog. Even that is, in a sense, looking at it from a factual standpoint hearsay. And what I mean by that is, is, you know, it doesn't sound to me that anyone actually saw the event as to what happened. We also have heard of what you said, that the child said. Again, that's, that's, you know, again, secondhand hearsay of what the child said. We haven't heard that directly from, from the child. And I certainly wouldn't ask her to come here to, to, to make that, that description to us. Again, I, I understand the family's concern of the child, that, you know, there was an, there was an incident. But I'm, I'm having a hard time, you know, finding anything of factual nature that I can really, you know, grab a hold of and say, look, this is, this is a dangerous dog. And for that reason, I'm, I'm, I'm having some difficulties making, making that determination to find that this is a dangerous dog.
In somewhat of a legal sense, if I may. Not to be disagreeable, Randy, but what we have heard is what would be called direct testimony from a direct witness and a direct victim. That means a lot. You know, as far as hearsay and things. What do you do about it? In my mind, there's no way I could support putting the animal away or any crucial punishments. You have empathy for both, both sides of it. I believe everybody does. I hope everybody out here does. But as I, as I say, there's, there's no evidence of a propensity for this dog to do this again or that it has done it. So that's, that's what's in my mind. Thank you.
Based on, just based on what we've heard tonight and what we've been provided, I don't think this was an unprovoked attack. I don't, I, I'm actually doubting whether it was a bite, but something obviously happened. And based on that, I'm going to move that we remove the potential dangerous dog designation. Is there a second?
Second.
Tim's second. Discussion?
I just think it was a freaky accident. Like I said, something happened, but, I mean, any animal that is startled like that is going to, you know, if it was, if the child was, you know, clawed or hit, you know, whatever. But I think it's something, just a freaky accident, so.
Not that it should happen, but not that it can't happen.
Any other discussion? Two motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So potential dangerous dog designation does not uphold. And thank you all for being here, so.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously you have an interest.
Thanks for your input.
Okay, Jack?
Item 4B, administrative hearing for denial of a conditional use permit. City council has requested to conduct an administrative hearing for Minnesota Build Harris LLC for the CUP denial. Minnesota Build Harris applied for a CUP to expand an existing self-storage business located in southeast quadrant of Sims Road and Highway 65. This proposed development was discussed at the December 18th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting to determine if there was a basis to proceed with the CUP application. There was no action on the matter, but the planning commission indicated they would consider a CUP application, but there may be variance approvals needed. The planning commission also noted to Minnesota Build Harris that they were, they were only an advisory body to city council and that all approvals for the project would be a city council decision. This site is zone B2 and the current, current storage units on the site are illegal non-conforming use. The CUP application came before city council on October 14th, 2019. The council denied the request by Minnesota Build Harris for a conditional use permit to expand the self-storage facility located at 21217 Highway 65. As a condition of the denial, Minnesota statutes 15.99 states, if a governing body denies request, it must state in writing the reasons or provide findings of fact for the denial and formally adopt a findings of fact resolution. The findings of fact were presented to council and adopted by council resolution 2019-50 at the October 28th, 2019 city council meeting. In your packet is a timeline of the process that was involved in the CUP submission and denial. At this time, staff recommends that council conduct an administrative hearing for the Minnesota Build Harris LLC 21217 Highway 65. As part of the hearing, the requister may present any new information and provide additional comments to council that are pertinent to their deliberations regarding this matter.
Okay, with that, we'll open the administrative hearing related to self-storage, release the site plan review at 21217 Highway 65. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. If you can state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is John Henry, 26515 Arbor Creek Lane in Shorewood, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I'm going to start and then I'll turn it over to my partner. I've been in communication throughout this whole process on this project. We also own the facility up on 241st and 65 that we're currently building. So we're in the self-storage business. And I've been, I was in communication originally with Colleen. And then we went through all the different planning commissions with Colleen. And I put it, I'm the one who put the timeline together, so that's why I wanted to talk about it. Is that when Colleen left, it got turned over to Aaron. And then from Aaron, it got turned over to Stephanie. So we feel that the ball was dropped a little bit. Because I have some emails with Stephanie. Whenever we had, came to a planning commission at the city of East Bethel, we received a full agenda that says, you're on the, you're on the board, you're on the schedule, you're on the agenda. And that's what we get as a, as a final deal that says, hey, you guys are going in front of the council. We never received this on the final council meeting. We went through two planning commissions with the council. Full approval, full, everyone was for it each time. When it got turned down by the council meeting, we, I didn't know, we didn't know it was going to be on the agenda and thus we weren't here. So we didn't have a chance to say anything. And that's why we asked for the review. So we've already, we, we spoke with the city multiple times and I put that in the agenda before we purchased this property. If you guys know the property, it was, used to be the auction house owned by two bids or bid a lot auction. And city, the council, the planning commission explained to us that their concern with the property was the look of the property. And every time we went through the planning commission, everybody was excited with what we were going to do with the property. We continued to push closing back on this property until we had, I know we didn't have the final approval from the city council, but until we had a chance to meet with the planning commission multiple times, had a meeting with Aaron, had a meeting with Stephanie, we didn't, we kept pushing the timeline back to know that we were going to be able to expand this self-storage facility. And the city, uh, planning commission told us how they didn't like all the vehicles parked in front of it called dead storage. In the meantime, we went ahead and removed all those. If you guys have driven by there, we've removed them all. If you remember the nice, beautiful sign that the old owners had up on there with the big phone number, we've removed that. We've removed all the gates, the ugly gates that they had. We put new blacktop in. We put a power gate so it's nice and secure for our customers. And we're in the service business and we want to serve the residents of the community. And I don't know if people are worried that our site plan showed a lot of buildings on there. We wanted to show a master plan to the city. Our plan by no means is to go in and build all these buildings at once. We want to build a couple of buildings. We will fill them up. As the need arises with the city, we will add a couple more. We're here to grow with the city. But if you look at the timeline, and I'm sure you all had a chance to review it, but on the bottom of the email, and I didn't print it out here, we actually put a before and after picture. We're trying to make this an absolute beautiful property, much better. We know it's at a busy intersection. And I even brought samples again of what we're going to use for these self-storage facilities. I've had conversations with council about not liking the look of self-storage. They don't like metal buildings along the road. We, we use brick. We use stucco. We make everything very nice. And so we're asking for the administrative review that now that we're here and we can actually talk about it, because this is the reason we purchased this property, just to expand what the current use actually is. That's all I have.
I think early in, in, in your statement, you mentioned that you're aware that the final decision doesn't come from anyone other than council, basically, right? And I understand that you, you, you worked quite a bit with our planning department and a planning commission.
And the reason, and if I can, just, the reason I, we weren't here at that last meeting is our email, they were still a couple of changes that your city engineer had suggested. With our engineer, they were going back and forth. And those weren't done yet. And that's why I figured it wasn't even going to be on that final council. Usually, they say, from our experience, here's a couple of changes, got to make these, let's go back and forth. And then I thought then it was on the council meeting. And that's why we didn't, weren't present.
Okay. I mean, part of the reason is, is the expansion of the use in this area. That's what council discussed. I'm sure you watched the tape.
I did, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, we were discussing the, I mean, this is probably our second busiest intersection in the city. And it's also key because just west of where you're at here is, is a large piece undeveloped land that will be something in the future. And so this, this area is, is going to be developed at some point in the future. Maybe sooner or later, we don't know. But I know I expressed my concern at council that by allowing this expansion in this area, that we are just basically writing off that corner in terms of any future use that fits within the long-term plans of the city. Meaning that it's a high-visibility corner that could be used better to serve residents in other capacities than, than a self-storage business. And I'm not, I'm not against the self-storage at all. I mean, there, there, there's a good use and it is a service to the public. But having it at the intersection of one of our busiest corners in the city and, and one that we see as future development into other uses, it's really locking up that land. that we see as future development into other uses, it's really locking up that land and taking away a lot of opportunity. And so, that, that was, I know, a lot of my basis for, for not allowing expansion. And, and this is consistent with, I, I know you're new owner, but this isn't the first time we've discussed this property over the twenty years I've been here, so, and, and there hasn't been an expansion allowed since that initial construction, so.
You mean, expansion on the original self-storage?
Right, yeah.
At this location? Was there ever an application to expand that?
Not, not, not to the extent that you've brought it, no, but there was discussions ten years ago or something like that, expanding it, so, or building something else on that land, so. I'm sorry, can, can you come up? Can you state your name and address, please?
David Heil, I'm the CEO of State Storage Group. So, we develop properties all over United States, and we do it in a fashion that we, we try to work with the community and like, to your point, right, you wanna use the land for its best case use. So, we are open for discussion because it is a pretty large parcel and we do feel like there, there could be a use case, like you said, right now you have a closed down gas station, right? So, the service case use that on the adjacent side of the street didn't work out, we know that that could be developed first. We'd be open for discussion of building placement, and that's why we're going back toward the engineers, that what's best for you guys, we wanna keep that in mind, but we already have an existing self-storage facility that's in service, we have clients there, we know it's gonna be there for the next thirty years, because these buildings have a, a metal wear life of fifty years, so it's not gonna fall down. So, we're trying to say, okay, how can we best serve you guys with what your long-term needs? And that's where we're looking for your recommendations and not just saying, hey, this is, our feet are in the sand, this is what we're gonna build. We wanna work with you, 'cause you already have the service, do we need to have forty thousand square feet? No, but what, can we have some opinions on where to take it? Because we have the, the proper way to engineer it, to have stormwater management, we do it in a way that we're not impactful to the community, because we try to make it so that when you drive by, you don't see a bunch of doors, you do the back of the buildings, so you have it nice blinded, it's secure, it's, it's private. It's not the old way of doing it where you, you go down on sixty-five and all you see is doors and lights. You see the big LED lights and it's kind of, you'll see it as you drive by, that's not the way we do it. We make it so it's a closed-in type of service. And that's why we brought the site plan the first time, and we have a lot of support on it, it was unanimous. And that's why we bought the facility for almost a million dollars, considering the expectations, we had no one kicking back. And we, we asked the old owners and they never put a application, but they were only there for ten years, but again, that's ten years, I, you bet you longer than me, so. But give us some opinions, let us draft something that works with you guys instead of just saying it's no go, 'cause right now we have an empty building. We have a eight hundred thousand dollar mortgage, we put twenty percent down on it, I support twenty partners around the United States, and he put his whole mortgage on this thing to expand it, to offer a service to your community, and now we have a vacant building. It's a tough position for us, because we had so much support leading up to it that the hammer just dropped. And now we have a tenant that's out because it was moving in the right direction.
Jack, are they restricted from coming back with different plans in the future with the denial?
No, they, they could come back with a, with an alternative proposal.
They can, okay.
I was under the impression that we denied this because he needed a rear access and the setbacks were wrong. I wasn't under the impression that we denied this because of his choice of what he was building there. That's the, from what I went back and read the minutes and stuff, I, I thought his application was incomplete because the, he needed a rear access and the setbacks weren't right, and there was one other thing.
The resolution we approved on October the twenty-eighth denied the CUP because of two major site issues, the setbacks and the entrance issue hadn't been fully addressed, plus there was also the issue of the highest and best use for this property, and that was contained in the resolution we approved on October the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I mean, the first point is that self-storage buildings are not permitted in this district, so it's not permitted. It's illegal non-conforming use, which can continue, but they can't be expanded without city council approval. So, those are the first two factors that, for the denial, finding is a fact.
So, how did that happen if they are, if they've had storage units there for ten years and all of a sudden it is not approved for storage?
They've actually been there like thirty years, haven't they?
They, they've been here for a long time, more than ten years.
The zoning changed twice now, like the zoning's changed this area, so. So.
And when, when they were originally built, they were either illegal use in that zoning district, or they were given approval by city council to be permitted there at the time they were constructed.
Yeah, our zoning back then was a little bit different than it is now, so.
Yeah, that was probably back in the nineteen nineties.
Yeah.
So, before there was discussions regarding a U-Haul and having renting trucks out there, but it was more in favor of us having a quieter service, because that would be a use, that'd be selling a commercial frontage, it'd be, it'd be selling boxes and tape and the moving items, and then you could have the auxiliary storage in the back. But we, we, we were getting opinions that they would rather have a quieter, where it was just drop off your storage and go. And that's, and that's kind of the, the turning decision is like, we can use this as a leasing office for our north location, which we do have approval on, that we're developing, you know, it would cater perfectly for that, because there is that inside of it already. And then, in addition to that, the empty building not being able to put storage lockers inside of a, a structure that's already up is really constraining us, because now we have empty space, and we are depending on, on that with the bank to pay the note. So, now we have tenant out, empty space, we can't even build out the inside, which is invisible to the drive-by approach. We're just in a tight spot and, and we, we weren't expecting it, because we held off closing for almost two or three months, it went through planning and engineering with your city, but because it was pitched between two or three different planners, then.
I, I don't know how much difference that would've made, other than the fact, I mean, it's, it's still gonna come to city council.
Oh, understood.
So.
Yeah, understood.
So, when we were discussing it, we were talking about adding buildings, I don't recall there being a discussion specifically about redesigning the interior of that one building in order to put storage lockers. Was that, was that a part of this at all?
It may have been discussed at planning commission, but it wasn't discussed at the council on the interior of the building. What we did discuss was the architecture.
Yeah, we didn't get into the details of the site plan review, just because of the bigger issues that were.
But that's, that's the impression that, that you got, is that not correct, or was it all part of the plan?
Yeah, no, um, the inside of the building's not a current issue, I'm dealing with the building inspector right now on that. And he's been dealing with the architect.
Okay.
And because it's already a conforming building, that it's okay to put stuff in there.
So, that's a separate issue?
That'd be a separate issue, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, I don't, I don't recall that being part of the discussion that we had, okay, very good.
Yeah, and, and, and you know, and actually, just to get correct, we actually own this property too, so we purchased the property, sliver of land as well.
The one next door to that?
Yeah, so there's two, there's a, there's a, there's a house here and our land is here, so we own this one as well. So, there's two IDs that we own, two IDs.
So, does that?
And so, is that?
Assuming, pardon me for interrupting you. So, was that included in our site plan, Jack?
That is shown on the site plan, and when they made this proposal, here, here's that sliver. Based on this and in the pond location though, I'm not sure what can be done, too much with that, other than it can be used as access into this property.
Well, we also had an issue, did we not, with, with the fire inspection on this property as to, on this site plan, as to whether or not the, the, the building plan was gonna work well enough with the radius of, of those?
Well, there, there was issue with access for emergency service vehicles and firefighting equipment that was, I think was identified to the applicants, but it wasn't addressed and we hadn't, we hadn't gotten a response, they, like he said, they didn't come to the meeting, so.
Yeah.
They didn't have a chance to answer those questions.
And we know that everything to the city will have to get approved on where the exact buildings are, you know, this fire department will have to prove it, we're doing a couple other sites, and they wanna make sure, I think it's, like in the city of St. Bonnie that we're doing is the two hundred foot round, you can't have more than a two hundred foot round, the fire truck. You know, we need to talk about it one time, you know, possibly even, if you guys are, if, if your biggest concern is, 'cause this property is, is already there and we purchased it, you know, we don't wanna sit in there vague, I think that's some of the worst thing to do, sitting there having a nice busy corner in a city vacant.
The entire lot is broken up, blacktop, which is only gonna decay more, so that's where we think, you know, the best use, if you think that the best use, we could combine this parcel and, and leave that as a section for sale and have a, a nice commercial stakes thing, you know, to, for future development, but we heard that there's other issues regarding septic and water, and can you have a Starbucks or any one of those other services?
And that's why we, we spoke with, I think we spoke with, um, Colleen, we did speak with Colleen about it, about possibly having that, but as of now, there is no city water here, and we, you know, if we sectioned out this piece of land and sold that as pure commercial for like a nice multi-use building, like a Starbucks or a Caribou or something, there's no city water here or se- or sewer currently, so, city like, any building like that is gonna require it.
Well, I think the key word there is currently.
Correct.
Yeah. Six years ago, we didn't have city water anywhere, so.
And it's a lot easier to service commercial sites with septic and wells than it is a residential site on a smaller space like this.
But that's not the only thing we're dealing with here, we're also dealing with the setback issue, which I know was, you know, a problem with the buildings.
Well, the setback, are you talking about like the setback currently right here?
Yes.
So, we, we set it up knowing that, I mean, we set it up and we know that we'd have to come in and ask for a variance for this. The reason we put it is so it'd be a nice racetrack around the properties, if not, we're gonna have to stagger the buildings. We thought it'd be a nicer racetrack for fighter and emergency vehicles getting through. So, we know for this, we're gonna have to come and apply for a variance, and if we can't get the variance, we're gonna have to move the buildings over a little bit. Now, the other thing, nobody had said, hey, the site plan wasn't, or we, we were asking for the CUP, the approval of the CUP, now with CUP, if they said, hey, if, you know, Colleen and then went to Aaron and Stephanie said, hey, you need an entrance in the back, we can change that, the buildings aren't built yet, we can change that. That's no problem, to, to appease you. 'Cause we were never talking about like this frontage road possibly going away, I watched on a council meeting how we talked about that frontage road might go away someday.
It's not even a frontage road.
No.
Whatever it is, yeah, I know, yeah, you had that discussion about what it actually is. And so, we don't, you know, currently, I mean, here is, this building's existing and here is our current entrance right now. And so, if we need a second one back here, you know, we could redesign it, but currently it's right here, and if, if we, if we ended up, you know, selling this building or renting it to a tenant, you know, and they have a building on Highway sixty-five, they're gonna need entrance somewhere, just like we're next to the pole world, so wherever we would have their entrance.
I think the point you made is the entrance needs to be off Davenport, not the second entrance. The parcel to the south, when they expanded many years ago, they were required to put in an entrance on Davenport when some point in time that service road gets, the service road gets closed.
Do we have like a, is that, do we have a timeframe, or do we know if that service road's gonna be closed?
No.
Okay, and then we could just put a, we could have an entrance right back here, and then we could just move, if you notice, you know.
And I think that was our point, 'cause I'm gonna quote that, one entrance needs to be closed, so.
And then we would just take this, 'cause if you notice, we didn't even do the, like a lot of self-storage, we take a lot of pride in what we do, if you, the guys that driven by there and ladies, a lot of them have a chain link fence with a little wire on top. We even had a nice wrought iron gate built, we know that this is a, there's a lot of traffic and we want it looking very, very nice, it's got our name on it.
There's no doubt it looks better in the past, it's been a long time, so.
And now, and now we pulled all our clients out of the parking lot, told they can't park there, we were never, that was a suggestion by the city, so in good faith, we did that. We know that there's storage containers back there that were there when we bought them, we'd like to remove those, but we need it, we'll, then we'll have another building, we'll put the people in there, and we'll do whatever suggestions you have, if you say we are gonna someday need an entrance back here, we won't design the retention on here.
I think it all ties back to, if you're okay with moving forward, we can invest the dollars into making whatever changes are required, because we know that we can access here, we know that if that service closes, we have to prepare for that closing if it does, we can change the layout as needed, but these are all details that need to be requested so we can send it to the engineer, because he's able to make it all work. Nothing is a showstopper from what you've told us, we just need to know where to start and where to stop. And if you guys want a carved out commercial section and have us put it for sale and, and have someone develop it for commercial use, we're up for that too. We get it resurfaced, and we, we do an add-on parcel to make sure that that parcel is larger, to have appropriate parking and then access from the Sims Road up here too.
I guess my thoughts, Steve, I'd like to see that corner cleaned up, I mean, at least these guys are coming forward, it's, it looks like a decent plan, I mean, they, they sound like they're gonna build nice buildings and, I mean, we've got somebody here, like you said, you don't know when that's gonna be developed, it's gonna be developed two years, ten years, twenty years, or?
Well, I mean, we got developers talking to us on the land across the highway, so it's, they're pretty much talking about every property up and down the highway right now, so.
But there's a lot of it for sale.
Yeah, well, it's been, no, I mean, they're coming to the city with plans, so.
There's a lot of land for sale up on sixty-five.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, my, I don't have so much an issue with the proposed buildings that are east of the existing buildings, my issue is everything north of there. The existing buildings there, I understand, you know, I, we don't expect anyone to, to redevelop and tear down buildings, but all that land to the north of that, that's the corner, and that, and that's what needs to be, I, I, this is not the use, you're gonna have all these buildings right in our, in, in what'll be a, you know, I, I don't like to compare so much, but every time I go to bunker in sixty-five and sit at that stoplight and look to the right and see a hundred acres of fenced-in cars, and what's the highest, it's gonna be an overpass eventually there, to me, and I'm not dissing Ham Lake, that is like the worst used to land ever, and this is a much smaller scale, by putting these storage units, it's gonna employ one person, two people maybe, so tax base is nothing for this. I, I agree that, that the service is good for the residents, but it doesn't, the, it doesn't need to be on the highest, one of the highest profile corners in the city.
So, just like this building, when you say you look over, we understand the look wise, and the city wants a certain look, and that's why we already started helping cleaning up the area, these buildings here are, the back is facing the road, and so you're not seeing doors here, this is the, this is what they call a monosole, a half building, right? The doors are gonna be facing inward, so you're not gonna see them from the road, what you're gonna see from the highway is we're not putting a fence up like a, like a, like a plastic ugly fence, I brought a couple samples just to show you what we do and what we're gonna do on this building, we don't do just a metal stone building, I mean, it's a stone, you don't wanna see a sheet of steel, we're gonna put three feet up, we're gonna do this nice limestone, followed by probably something either like a, a stucco, like a cement board, the nice stucco, or we're even looking and, and we like this even more, is a nice wood above it, and we can show you some pictures on the company's website, this is what they're putting on, on Starbucks, on, on the large extra space storage, I mean, this is very high-end, nice stuff.
All the, all the new commercials.
And we're gonna make it, we're gonna make it look very nice.
We hope to set a standard that when someone develops beside us, we, we have at least a bare minimum, so, like this is what we wanna see.
So, you're not gonna see doors at the front?
No.
I, I, I don't doubt that you're gonna make a, build a quality building that's gonna look nice, but to what service is it to the city, citizens, other, other than a storage? And, and although they seem to be on, on the high routes, I, I don't understand why the self-storage units need to be on the, the most visible routes around. I mean, again, there, there's. I mean, again, there, there's fifty, fifty other uses for this property in the future that will serve the citizens.
And, I mean, it could be, I mean, next door to us is the Old World and that doesn't look very pretty.
There's, uh, there's no doubt, there's no doubt there, there needs to be some changes in the future of some of those businesses in the corner. And those business owners know that too. They know that. It's just, when's it gonna happen? We can't, we can't predict that. I, I can tell you, it's not twenty years old. It's not ten years old. Something is gonna happen there. Like I said, we're getting overtures from, from developers in this area, so.
Is there a minimum spec that you want for that corner? Because if we're already serving with this use case, right, it works. And if we're willing to make this look like Class A, how far do you want? 'Cause remember, us, us coming in here, we're also gonna do an add-on parcel, which allows this commercial corner to grow if you allow us to reuse this and then carve out a section for commercial use. 'Cause right now, it's a skinny parcel, right? So now that we own both of them, we can add that residential into it and it allows someone to serve properly without some sliver of parcel in that corner, which you're, which you're asking for.
I, I, it's not for us to decide what gets developed. It is...
No, I'm saying in your, in best case, a wider depth of parcel is gonna be easier for someone else to develop. How many can we run it off?
That's true. And, 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 and just like you bought that piece of land, someone may buy the, the home that's there. Or the next home.
Or the home.
On Sims, yeah.
But as long as we're in control of it and we can't split it or anything, then it just stays how it is, which is the gray and blacktop. So it gives us the ability to carve out, if we can come to an agreement, what you guys need or want or would like to see in the future and what we allow us to develop on a piece of land and a million bucks investment. 'Cause we already know you're not gonna tell us to remove these buildings. So how far can we take this is the question. Because everything else can be answered with engineering.
Other thoughts? I, again, my, my opinion is, is the buildings are going to east on that land, I, I'm okay with.
You're okay with this?
Yeah, 'cause it, I mean, it, it, that's, to me, that's, to me, one of five, that's the best, that's the best use of that part of that property.
But we can't, we can't split it, just... Look, I mean, we would never just split this.
Well, I would say, that's four acres right now, four point two, two acres. If it's, we can look in the sales records, what are people developing at, what are they carving out at? Let's set up the perfect placement for someone to develop that. If it's one and a half or one point seven five, I would want it.
It was like an acre was the ideal.
So there's an ideal setting that we leave for you guys to develop what you want. Because if this stays self-stored, we have no financial reasoning to break it off, right? There's no reasoning. So it's just gonna be on development, the gray and blacktop. Or we say, we're gonna put money into surveying this and engineering it for the next person to develop. That's the agreement that we can, that we can have unconditional use, that we agree to you, so that something can happen. 'Cause nothing will happen if we just keep...
I, I think that's a possibility.
I personally don't have a problem with any of it. Once you get the setbacks taken care of and that rear entrance plan submitted, I, I don't have a problem with it. I am very admirable of your willingness to work with us. And I think that's very admirable and I really appreciate it.
You know, perhaps a more efficient discussion would, would be to do a side of work meeting or have a separate meeting with staff and, and see what options are there. Well, but I think, I think it's gonna have to include council.
What's that?
I said, I think it's gonna have to include council because, you know, both John and, and, and David here have spent time and money, you know, talking to staff and talking to the planning commission in order to come up with this plan, and I, and I appreciate that. But it's, you know, we're the group here that's saying, you know, we've got a problem with, with, with how this is being developed. And I don't, I don't disagree with you that, you know, it, it doesn't seem like the best use right on that corner to just put in storage units. But again, I think we also have to, have to take into consideration all the work and effort that they've put in so far and their willingness to maybe change their plan to at least try to, you know, address some of our concerns. And, and yeah, we could probably stick to our guns and say, you know, we're not willing to allow you to, to expand this at all, period, from, from where it's at. And I, I think, I think we would, you know, be safe in, in making that, that determination. But I think, I think in the discussion that we've heard so far, I really think that, that we should really work with, with these gentlemen, you know, to come up with a way for them to expand this business and, 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 you know, try to figure out how much land that, that we can separate from the corner to make sure that, you know, there is something that we could put there that would be of, of better use than self-storage. And, and it sounds to me as if the plan that you put forward is, is really kind of a step-by-step process. You wouldn't be building all of the buildings at once anyway. So, you know, with, with that in mind, would you gentlemen be willing to come to a work meeting and, and, and let us send this back to staff for, you know, them to maybe work with you to come up with a plan as to how much of this property, you know, would be advantageous to set aside for the use that we're talking about? And then come back to a work meeting and have that discussion with us? And I realize it's all this extra time that we're dealing with, but I think we do have a concern here as to how this is gonna be developed. I mean, 'cause it's, it's not just that, again, we're not just talking about that this is not something that we really want in the corner, but it's, it's, it is a main concern. But also, you know, with how the setbacks are, are gonna happen and where the driveway is gonna come in and those type of things. And, and so I guess my question is, you know, your willingness to do, to go through this process with us?
Absolutely. We're pretty far down the line though.
No, I understand. And, 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 you know, the other point-
We're a lot down the line and we're, we're willing to work it out.
Well, the other point that, that I would like to make here too is, you know, you were saying, well, gee, we're, you know, we're willing to spend the extra money to, you know, to make the changes, to, you know, have the road come in, you know, through the back and, and so forth and so on. I, at this point, I would prefer that you didn't spend more money at this point without having an agreement with the city as to what, what's gonna happen with this property. 'Cause I, I, I don't think that's fair to you either. So I, I will, I will make a motion.
Can I interrupt you just one minute?
Sure, you can.
And make a suggestion, if, if we're gonna do this, why don't we sit down with the applicants and come up with some alternate ideas so that when it comes to the work meeting, we'll have some basis or some document to work from?
And those blocks of, on the north side, it would be interesting to identify what size they are. There's a wider one and a skinny one.
And this is the one here that when we were talking with Colleen about, if we combine these two, this was the parcel she was talking, or we thought about, could be a commercial. 'Cause it just, it just flows, right? So I mean, you got the sinker right here. So however big that is, that's what we were talking about before with her.
And, you know, we're looking for other things. It's-
I mean, we could even help develop it someday.
Yeah, we're looking for other things and, and it's part of the plan, the comp plan, but it's really difficult to... I left my Ouija board home as far as what-
And I guess too-
And, and as far as what's there, you know, we would like to see different things come in, but what, what's base? What fits in these places, you know, as far as?
And if, if, if as council makes the recommendation this evening, if, if we went with assuming that we kept this as a commercial, I know the mayor said that there was no problem with the east side.
I had no problem with it.
I mean, yes, you, correct. And we were here tonight to talk about the CUP. If, if, if there's a way, can we get a, a vote on the approval of maybe the, a, a CUP approval? 'Cause I know CUPs go with conditions. If we only can add on a few, a couple of these buildings, we would love to get, add our couple, maybe just a building here and a building here. Then we get rid of the containers as well. We can get those built for this spring, right? Because we have a lot of buildings, probably be a five thousand square foot building and a five thousand square foot building. We can get them started, 'cause you know, we have to start on engineering, get our concrete lined up before road restrictions go on. We have the concrete, we get them all some come spring, we can add these buildings, we can get rid of all these containers, 'cause we have to convince-
Plan for the driveway.
Yep, 'cause we're planning for the driveway, so there's not gonna be a building sideways here. Just, and you can pull up the other plan, so just a little bit longer building here, a little bit longer building here. We'll plan for an entrance here someday. Stormwater can probably go back over here and then we can at least get our CUP on this, so come spring, we can plan for that and get rid of these ugly containers as well. Just like we got rid of, like, we, we're, what we say we're gonna do, like, we got rid of all this parking already.
I think, you know, in terms of expediting process, I think what you just presented right there, like, just by nature is gonna be an easier, an easier decision to make. We still need the drawings, you still need the, the, you know, all the engineering and technical questions.
And we know we won't get any of that. We, we can't get our building plan until you, as a building inspector, approves all that.
But I mean, we can't, my, my point is, we can't just say, yeah, there'll be a couple buildings here in this drawing. We need, we need something to come forward. And again, I would still eat, I would still sit down with staff or, or have it as a work meeting, however you wanna do it, to, to come up with a better plan, or, shouldn't say a better plan, a different plan that, that be more amenable. And then, you know, which keeps that northern part in reserve. I think that, that makes things a little easier.
And if we could get an idea of council support on, like, what John was presenting, say if we stayed on this lower part of the parcel, how many, uh, council would say, I would, I would move forward on that decision? Because if that's the case, we can invest three thousand dollars in engineering and present you a package that has driveway, the stormwater detention, setbacks, everything, everything that you're asking for answered, now that we know what we need. But that's, that's the engine point, right? Is that if-
Again, we can't give you approval on that, but, but there's no problem with taking a straw vote and what-
Yeah.
Could you, could you give us an approval on this, uh, uh, approval with conditions of these two buildings?
Maybe can't because you have-
Not tonight, we can't, no.
I, I'm open for what, my interest, I, I was saying, is define what the spaces are, how they break out. You're not gonna put a grocery store on there, not gonna put a shopping center on there. You're not gonna put many, many things that people want. If I could afford it and I was you guys, I'd just hang on to it and then I'd sell it to make the money on.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't worry too much about you guys thinking about what should go on there, so.
Yep.
The market'll tell you what goes on there, so.
Well, we can't market it until we have it.
Oh, I know. I understand.
And it's, it's good, you know? We just have to survey and engineer. But we wanna make sure that we pull that residential parcel in and that's where we're trying to get a warm, cold feel on it, so we can invest the time.
Well, we don't have a work being for another three weeks, four weeks.
First, Monday in February.
First Monday in February.
That was, we wanna do something else.
I, again, I would suggest you meet with staff and so they understand the issues, the setbacks and all that.
Well, the last time that we, so we went back and forth with staff for six months now, nine. You guys have given us the best explanation so far.
Right, but I, I guess the point is, we never, we never saw a drawing showing that it was consistent with what our comments were, so. I mean, the issue's out there still. I understand that, so.
So, council has to, we understand that. And we're willing to put the time, the front end time on it and a little bit of risk into it. If we present this, and when's the next council meeting, how would we be able to present if we?
The next council work meeting is February third on a Monday. And then the next city council meeting after that would be the tenth of February.
That's the present schedule.
So the question would be, if, if, you know, we were to follow that schedule, would that be soon enough for you to get things prepared for spring?
Yes.
But we don't, the one thing that's, I'm, I'm a little leery of is placing buildings where you guys are hard pressed on, on the setback. When this one is clearly the old setback rules and now the new ones that went in before us like eight, ten years ago, now have the setback here. So, if we could get a, a mood point on which way to move on that, do you want it to look, the layout to be cohesive, or do you want us to stagger the new regulation? Because we can-
How often do we issue variances for setbacks in commercial properties?
I don't know that we've-
I don't remember one.
I can't recall a separation of variance for a setback for a commercial property. Of course, we've had very few applications either.
And then the question is, assuming that, that we did do that, do we wanna do that all at once?
What do you mean all at once?
Well, so they need to provide a new site plan, right?
Yeah.
And then they also have to get the setback permission, right? The variance. So my question is, in what order should we do this, or can we do them all at once?
It, it could be done simultaneously.
Right?
And if one failed, then essentially the, the rest of it would probably be a moot point. The other thing though is, since this, this is going to be really an entirely new CUP, it's not gonna be the same one or a modification. This may have to go back to the planning commission.
And the next planning commission following that would be?
Well, we, we have, the planning commission is the twenty-eighth of January. We couldn't get it on this one. Depending on the timeline, there's always the possibility of calling a special meeting to address this particular situation.
We can still get it on that planning commission meeting though, right?
For the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
If, if we get the information-
It's two weeks.
If, if we get to the site plan and everything, if they can review, we could, we could work it on there.
Can I, yeah, if we get your site plan and we might not have all the new, if we had to do the CUP, we also had to do all the architectural elevations for these buildings? They're gonna be similar.
Pat, in terms of what we're doing tonight in administrative hearing, we've already denied the CUP as presented. Are we able to reopen that if they change things within the CUP? Not, not do a reapplication as Jack suggested, but?
I would suggest a new site plan and just start over.
Okay.
Although that's gonna take more time, but.
So one, one option, and it sounds like we gotta, you'd have to do a separate, a new CUP for this.
Is a, is, is a CUP, so just clarification for my point, is a CUP just approving the ability to put a couple more buildings here, or is it approving the site?
It's a building to expand at all. It requires a CUP. It requires a city council approval.
Could we get an approval on that CUP and then have, have the site plan approved?
Conditional on the new site plan?
Conditionally you guys approve the site plan, like we just talked about.
The, the big, the big question though is, we may have to have another public hearing on this.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, all the conditions and-
It, it, I, I don't, I don't really think that we can get it on the twenty-eighth meeting, but depending on how critical time it is, the next planning commission meeting is the fourth Tuesday in February, whatever date that is. That's why I suggested, if this is a critical issue with time, then I wouldn't-
We could, we could hold a hearing too though, right? Does, does it have to be at planning, or can council hold a public hearing?
The public hearing at the planning commission- The public hearing is at the planning commission.
It has to be planning commission, okay.
Because it involves a zoning issue.
Planning commission in February is the 26th, it's the last weekend, last week of.
25th.
25th of February. I guess my. Not according to this.
My, my thought on, on going to planning in January with this is, is, and I don't see, think they'll see an issue is, is you have a, basically a concept, a new concept, and get their feeling for it. But they've already approved what, your whole plan, so.
So you're saying your public notice would have to come out the whole process?
I, I would assume you guys are a little disappointed with how things are going, but there is interest being showing, shown to try to come up with some solution.
I agree, Tommy, there, there's a solution here, so. Just may take a little bit longer, that's all.
Could we get remarks from each council member, just as?
I don't, in terms of expanding to the east, I didn't hear anyone that was opposed to it.
Now, I'll show you, can I show you what my, what our ideas on this site plan that we'll present, like, we'll get it drawn up and everything. Just to make sure we're on the same page. A building here, a building here, entrance in the back is how it's going to show. This piece of parcel, we will section off, we'll have to get that approved through the city, just section that up, and probably a building here and a building there someday.
Well, you'll have to have the wall over here to.
If that's what they get that.
This, this would also be, we have that on the site plan there, which would close off this entrance.
So my question to you, Steve, is, you know, they're talking about that property to the north up to that middle square as doing storage units. Do you have an objection to that parcel being?
Yeah, my, my point is anything north of what's existing.
So you're saying nothing, nothing north of what's there?
That's my personal part preference. But, you know, without even knowing what the dimensions are of those parcels, I think, you know, you know, if, if you're going to carve that out for future use, you're going to obviously need to research on what, how much land you should have for that future parcel.
This is also our septic, so.
Right, no, I understand, you're not going to be able to build right there, or you have to relocate your septic, but.
Or any, yeah, I mean, we couldn't do it.
Yeah.
We couldn't section here, right? That's why I was thinking, you know.
And it could be.
And that's what I mean.
Yeah.
For my purpose, without knowing the dimensions and what, how it could be carved up or something, there's, there's, I can't visualize any applicability other than what's sitting there right now for future. Could put a tattoo shop on the corner.
So, uh, it's a good thing you're not our planner.
Yes.
So it, if, if, if I read the table right, we're okay with expansion to the east existing buildings. And to the north, to a certain extent, we need some discussion, so. See, see what you propose.
And then the variance, the mood point.
You gotta come with a strong basis for variance, man, it, it, it's commercial property. And actually, if this was new property, you'd have to have a buffer zone between the, the residential and your property, so.
And I guess it's some, it is an opinion of the, of the council, because, you know, we did, we did it for us number one aesthetics, but then also race track.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you gotta, you gotta present a basis for it, so just to come out and say ask for sup, ask for setback variance.
You know, if, if, if this is the only other scenario, then this would be our entrance, and these would be our buildings. So if, if that is the way it's going to go, it'll kind of be like an S track.
Yeah, and that's what you gotta see what makes sense for your traffic flow, you know, so.
And so.
I think if you keep it in your mind that, that service road is eventually going to go away.
So will that be just, uh, that much further out Highway 65, I assume?
It's actually, that's within the state right of way, right? Or is, that's not our property.
Now, that, that's a private road, but let's see what, where it is. It really doesn't, show it really clearly here, we'd have, we'd have to check that out.
Who owns the road?
I don't know if it's a frontage piece of each of those individual properties out through there, or if it's in the Mid-Dock right of way, that's what we have.
Do you know if you have any fee interest in that road in front of you?
Do you have any interest?
Fee interest, do you own, have any ownership of that service road? Okay.
So is, um.
Here, here is, here is the Mid-Dock right of way line right here above this. I would suspect that that's part of those lots, but it doesn't show it there on the lot line for this. So we, we, we would have to research that to find out who's the actual owner of this.
So is our, is our current site plan that, now that we're discussing it, is open? Is it, is our original site plan dead?
No, we, we've got to act on.
So we have before us, um, the hearing to deny. So my question, that would be my question is, Pat, is do we, I mean, we either have to, you know, deny or, or let it go forward, is that not right?
No, we could, that, that was just a suggestion, if we should choose to deny, we can do anything we want to. We can actually table a decision on this or even make another motion.
Well, that was where I was going earlier when you interrupted me.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But this, but this is already denied.
Yeah, but this is, this, this is the.
Yeah, the.
This is the, uh, this is to sustain the denial.
Pat, what's our, what's our options on this?
Mr. Mayor, you could, well, there's a, in your packet, there's an amended resolution of denial, which adds a few more findings. So you could adopt that resolution, and they could come back with a, a new CUP request. Or tabling would be an option as well.
And if we table it and they provide new plans, we can still act on new plans? So they don't have to go through the CUP process?
I think my recommendation would be that they go through the CUP process again, even though unfortunately it's going to take more time.
What's, what's our risk if we don't, what's the exposure to the city if we don't do that? Are we not following our protocols or?
I think as the city administrator stated, it should go by protocol back to the planning commission.
When, when the public hearing was held for this, were there any residents along that property line where it says proposed storage unit that spoke at the public hearing in opposition to this proposal?
I don't think there were any residents there. And I don't think, I don't think that's the issue, I don't think the issue is the conflict with the residents.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still hearing the questions, I'm not understanding the risk of re-tabling it and then rediscussing it and then redeveloping the site plan, because we're not changing the original CUP content or changing the building layout. I, I, I'm not understanding what the risk is by continuing to bring it back forward. Because if you do do a, another public notice, it's going to be the same, but they're going to be moving buildings around, which we could have done. The original council could have said, hey, we need to move these buildings around, it's conditional on this.
I'm, I'm not trying to be the fly in the ointment, but part of the condition of the findings, the fact it was originally approved by council at the October meeting involved this other higher land use issue. So the new CUP then would address that concern and remove that from a consideration. Would also address the setback issues too, that are currently still outstanding. So in essence, it would be a totally new site plan because it wouldn't look like what we have here now.
However, if, if council would have recommended it at that meeting and said, hey, we still want to use highest and best use of that line of the corner, would that continue on, or would that require another CUP?
At that time, the CUP could have been amended.
Well, it could have been sent back to planning.
Yeah, sent back to planning.
We could have sent it back to planning.
So now are we too far along on why to send it back?
The council's already denied the CUP. That's the problem.
That's wrong.
Yeah.
So in terms of other entabling, so our action is either to sustain the, the denial or to reject the denial, which, which in a sense would be approval of their plan, right? Because we can't modify it at this point.
That's correct.
So I, I, either we have to go back to approving their original plan and rescind our, our action we did earlier, or it's sustained.
Or can you, can you approve it with conditions?
Well, that's, that's what we've been talking about, we can't change it. I mean, there's conditions, but these are significant changes too, to your drawings.
We're still gap four without a verdict building permit, which you guys are making fun of call on.
Well, I, I think, I think kind of where we're, we're at here, is that whether, I, I don't think we're going to go, go back and approve this original condition because it doesn't meet the requirements that, that is in our interest. I think, I think though, you know, it's either table or, or to sustain the denial and, and start over, which means going back to the planning and, and redoing the, you know, the cup application. So I don't think it really matters whether we deny this or table it.
Well, I, I don't understand what tabling would help. It's just delaying, we still have to act on this hearing tonight eventually.
Unfortunately, I, I. Right, no, I, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see another way other than having to reapply, I, I, I can't see another.
Well, then, then with that in mind, I will make a motion to sustain the denial of the cup by approval of the amended resolution 2020 dash 04 as exhibited, for us to go back and redo the cup with the changes that have been discussed here tonight with staff.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion.
Would you, uh, I'm sorry, discussion.
No, it's discussion, go ahead.
So we all understand what we're voting on before we get to that? Reiterate what the motion.
It's the resolution, it's in our packet.
Okay, gotcha.
Twenty, 2020 dash 04.
Did we have an escrow on this? For the CUP, because it requires an escrow and a P, correct?
There is an escrow on the CUP, that's correct.
Can we ask for a consideration on that? And I think it was, I think it was a decent amount, wasn't it?
And my recommendation would be not to have a new filing fee or anything for this.
I think that could be a staff determination at this point.
At, at, at this point, my recommendation would be if we want to go with this different approach, you've already paid your fee for the application, you've paid your escrow, that's sufficient to cover anything. The only, the only thing that might come up is if there were any extra legal or engineering charges in review, we might have to come back and ask for a little additional to the escrow. I don't know what that balance is, so we'd have to see what that is. So that would be my recommendation as far as fees go.
That's their foot in the door as well?
Well, it just means that they're going through the process again, but we're not going to charge them.
We're waiving the city, we're waiving the city staff charges, so that's what staff can make that determination. And again, I would, I would suggest you get with Stephanie and Jack early and, and just map out your plan of action through all these meetings and stuff, so.
What, so what, what's the final decision on, when can we get it front of? Does it, the new CUP will have to go through the planning?
It'll have to go through a whole process, yeah.
So when can we get it, what's the earliest we can get on that one?
The, the earliest right now, unless we call a special meeting, would be in the end of February.
End of February?
Yes.
Can we call a meeting, special meeting for that?
We, we, we would have to see what the timelines are, there's going to be an advertising time, it has to be advertised for 10 days when we get it in the paper. What, how long's it going to take you to get all your submissions in?
How much time do you need from our submissions to the meeting time?
Well, it's going to have to be sent to the city engineer again for his review and the fire chief for his review, so.
Over.
Generally, the normal time we require this to be in 30 days, so we have plenty of time. We'll do what we can to accelerate it, though.
But, but the legal, we got 10 day notice in the paper, is that?
Yeah, 10 day notice in the paper.
Have to have that, and that's after we receive the application, so.
It, the, the best thing to do would be to sit down with us as soon as you can do it.
So what do you expect it like tomorrow?
Well, we'll work something out for you.
I heard Jack say he's available, so. He's here at like 4:00 AM, so.
So i- i- if we can do it, uh, it's a 9:30 in the morning, because we have a staff meeting at 8:00. We can do it at 9:30, we can sit down and map the strategy and the schedule out for this.
Someone do you want to do that?
9:30 tomorrow morning.
Okay, sounds good.
There we go. Okay, any discussion?
I want to have the new site plan drawn up by the.
Uh, to the motion, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Thanks for your patience, too.
I'll make a motion, drop tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
I'd like to pull item E.
I would like to pull item F.
Okay, any discussion to the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Jack, item E, explain the signatory.
In the resolution for the check signatory, the city administrator and the mayor designated as signees, but we need one council person added to that list. So I would recommend that the mayor appoint a council person to add to the list of check signees.
I'd like to appoint our acting mayor, Randy Plazanz, for another signatory. Okay, would, I'll make a motion then to, on resolution 20 dash, 2020 dash 03 is check signatory approval that we add, council member Randy Plazanz says a signatory as well. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Randy, item F.
So at the last city council work meeting, we had discussed proposals in order to promote city sanctioned events to get more residents involved. And as a result of those discussions, I volunteered, as did Tim Marionton, to assist in creating a board game day at the East Bethel City Senior Center. And with that in mind, we've already set a date at the East Bethel Senior Center on February 8th from noon until 6:00 PM. And so I just wanted to put that out there and get approval from council to make a sanctioned event.
I'll move the city council sanctions, the board game day for February 8th to 2020.
I'll second.
Uh, discussion?
I just want to say I love all these possible titles for the game day over here. May the game be with you. Pretty good.
It was Jack likes that one, so. How are we going to advertise this?
We will advertise this on Facebook, Nextdoor, website, reader board, Channel 10.
That's right, we have social media now, I forget that.
We'll make the announcement too, also with the meeting, the Saturday waffle breakfast at the fire department, so.
There we go.
Any way we can.
Bring some board games to the waffle breakfast, just give an example.
I will do that.
I think it's a great idea, I think this will be good, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Uh, there's no new business. There's no new business, and round the department reports. Jack?
Item 7G1, reserve capacity loan report. City of East Bethel entered into the wastewater service rates and sewer services charges agreement with the Metropolitan Council in 2010. This agreement established an annual quota requirement and set a contract schedule for the sewer availability connection charge. This quota is set to increase at 17% per year to amortize the cost of the Met Council wastewater treatment plant and effluent disposal system that serves the city of East Bethel. The agreement created a reserve capacity loan to finance this facility, and it accumulates the unmet goals of the annual SAC quota over the 20-year term of the agreement. Outstanding debt balance is due upon the expiration of the reserve capacity loan in 2022. In 2013 and 2015, the city and Metropolitan Council executed amendments to the original agreement. The 2013 amendment allowed for a modification of SAC charges if the city could work out an agreement to connect Village Green to the city sewer system. The 2015 amendment placed a not-to-exceed cap of $2 million on the reverse reserve capacity loan. This amendment limits the city's liability to a maximum exposure for the loan repayment to $2 million. The city of East Bethel did not meet the SAC quotas for fiscal years 2012 through 2018, which creates a reserve capacity loan balance debt of $703,384 through December 31st, 2018. In 2019, there were 136 equivalent sewer access connections in the city which exceeded the contract amount of 111. As a result, the reserve capacity loan balance obligation is decreased to $615,971 as of December 31st, 2019. Contract amount for sewer access connections for 2020 is 130. Contingent growth in the city sewer service area will slow growth of or reduce this negative balance or postpone the $2 million limit call date until there are additional reserves in the city sewer fund to totally or partially pay the principal and interest on this loan. I put this on here because I get lots of questions on what is the reserve capacity loan? Where do we stand? So for the first time in seven years, we met our quota. We have, I think, a pretty good chance perhaps of meeting our quota again next year. The more times we meet our quota or get close to it, it postpones that call date on the $2 million. It is time to build up our sewer fund balance to pay a good portion or all of that loan when it comes due. Currently, there is $468,000 in the sewer fund, so we're making good progress there. So I just wanted to give everybody an update here and see if council has any questions and make the public aware. We are making progress on this loan too. It decreased for the first time since its inception. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
So with the 136 SAC units in 2019 of the big projects, which does that include? The apartments?
It includes the apartments, Cedar Creek Senior Housing, and all the residential connections we had in Biking Preserve and Whisper National. It does not include Cambie Hills. Cambie Hills hasn't gotten their CO yet, so when Cambie Hills gets their CO in hopefully about another month, then they'll pay their SAC connection charges, which will go on our 2020 goals.
Did they get the termination from that council yet? How many SAC units?
They did, 22.
22, okay.
So the 25 over that we had this year, that's just meaning for this last year? And now we're back to 130 to come for this next year, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the quota for next year.
Right.
If I did my math right, we're behind about 237 units. Does that sound right?
I've got 213, so.
I did it in my head, so I'll take either number, so. So we got 213 units to catch up then, so. And we're back to even? Is that the way you look at it?
If we had 213 units next year and 130, which is the contract amount, we'd be even.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
But the important thing on this is, is the way this is set up, it's backloaded on the end of it. Those will probably never be met. What this does, and the key thing is, is that it gives us the opportunity to hopefully have enough funds to substantially pay down this loan amount when it comes due, or even pay it all in full, and avoid the worst-case scenario, which we would owe $19,697,000. So the most that we're limited to would be $2 million on the call of the loan.
Okay.
And that's the negotiations that city council did with Met Council back in 2015, and this was one that was, in my opinion, it was a home run.
All right, any other questions for Jack? All right.
Item 7G2, consider approval of memorandum of understanding for the Elvage project. The draft memorandum of understanding for the Elvage project was discussed at the January 6, 2020 city council work meeting and as exhibited as attachment 1. The primary question related to the draft presented at the work meeting was the specific assignment of the date for the commencement of utilities installation and road completion. Developers requesting these dates to complete the negotiation with this commercial lot sales for Phase 1 of the project and to satisfy his commitment to his bank for financing. While the dates commit to cities' timetable, they are conditioned upon approval of all the factors necessary for us to start our portion of the project. Council also requested a clarification of a recital that dealt with the partial funding of the Minnesota Department of Transportation on the redesign of city constructed roads in item 2B and 2F. This draft has been submitted to the developer and we are awaiting his comments. The amended MOU was sent out today. We had several negotiations going back and forth with the developer. He made some approvals of some language that I think answered the council's question as far as clarification and then defined this as we will not participate in the project until there is an award announcement from Mendot and acceptable and responsible bids are accepted and awarded.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval of the memorandum of understanding for the Elvage project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made. Second discussion. Jack, on page 2. And I'm looking at what you gave us tonight, the printout.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's a formatting issue or what, but towards the top after C, there's like a whole paragraph that doesn't fit. Is that part of C? Is that a new...
That's kind of a rewrite of what was there the last time because it's an addition to a clarification of some of the terms, and this is the way it was presented to us.
Well, my point though, it goes from A to B to C, and then to this paragraph, and then to D to E.
We could change that to DEF, but this is the way it was presented to us in the comments by Mr. Nelson.
Does anyone else think that's odd?
I see it, A, B, B, C, D, E. I missed some place in there.
Turn the page, George. This is what I'm talking about, that paragraph.
Yep, I get it.
So anyhow, that's a format. I don't know if it changes the context of the agreement at all, but a couple of questions I have within that is are we going to be able to commence construction of utilities by June 30th?
If we meet those deadlines, that's why they're putting there as a condition. Because if we don't, then that gives us until after June 30th to start.
I'm just asking, are we physically able to start construction on utilities by June 30th?
It's a possibility, yes.
Well, if we're going in agreement, I think it shouldn't be a possibility. We should be... Have some confidence we're going to be able to do that.
Well, I have confidence we can do that, but...
Are the plans being worked on now?
The plans are being designed now.
And when are we expected to see them?
We hope to see them by the end of February and go to bid by March.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not making commitments we can't make. Then the other one I had too was on the same page, item 3, it says project, and then triple I. The two I and double I all reference dates. And so one of the conditions is the parties enter agreement, the development... Parties enter into a development agreement for the project prior to the meeting of the city council, which final plat approval will be considered. Can we assign dates to that so we know if that even works? Because all of a sudden it goes to June 30th, 2021 is the next one, so.
We can. I can add that in there.
Maybe it doesn't need it. I don't know. I'm just more of asking the question if...
Well...
Prior to the meeting.
The final plat approval has to be done before we'll start on the...
Development agreement.
The development agreement and also the utilities construction. We have to have the approval of the final plat before we'll start on that. And it ties the final plat approval and the final PUD approval together. So those will have to be done prior to June 30th before it meets our conditions to start on it.
So that has to be done prior to June 30th, too?
Correct. We could add that date in there if you'd like.
So how are we going to approve a final plat when they haven't constructed their roads? What are they presenting as a plat?
They will present the first outlot. So actually, there'll be two plats on this.
So just those two lots right near 187?
That's correct.
So it's not going to have any of their roads on it, so the whole rest of things is going to be an outlot?
That's correct. And then they'll submit the final plat once they determine their final design on that. We expect that to follow fairly closely after this is done. So there'll be two plat approvals.
Right, but we... What's the second aspect? What's the second approval?
The second approval would be for the internal roads, the roads that they're going to do.
Right, so that'll be a couple of years down the road then?
Well, they want to start those soon after we do.
Then why do we say they're not... They need to start construction by June 2021?
That's for those two commercial lots that are going to be served by this initial plat approval that involves only our road.
Right. I'm correct that they have to have their roads constructed before we accept them and do a final plat? So are they proposing to construct their roads this summer as well?
They don't have to have their roads constructed before they do the final plat. The final plat will dictate where their roads are going to go. Now, the developers' agreement will dictate what the terms are for the construction of their internal streets. Their final plat will just actually lay out where they're going to do. When we approve that, then we can enter into the developers' agreement with them.
All right. I have no further questions. Anyone else? Discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Staff report.
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Council report. Tim?
A couple of things. Last week, the upper rung met. We approved the 2021 budget. It'll be sent out to the city councils for their review, and then we'll get it back upon reviews and then pass that budget for 2021. And the waffle breakfast is January 20th, 8 to 11, Station 1. And the fire department meeting this morning, which is general maintenance. That's all I got.
Okay, Tom?
Road commission meets tomorrow. Otherwise, nothing.
Okay, Randy?
I have nothing other than to remind everyone that every Wednesday between 1:00 and 3:00 PM, there is East Bethel Open Skate at the ice arena.
And our outdoor rink is still holding up with this weather, or...
It's kind of iffy. It should be better after this week, once we have some cold winters.
Yeah, we had a couple of cold weeks here, so, okay, good.
I do have one comment about that, though. There was some concerns about the ice in the parking lot.
It says Saturday up here.
So somebody evidently was slipping and sliding. I don't know if we want to take a look at that.
We sent some crews out there Saturday to sand and salt that. I'll look at it again to make sure it's still not...
Yeah, I mean, it looks... I went there on Saturday too, and it's the stretch right in front of the door. The rest of the lot's fine. I think it's from all the cars that have been idling there. It's just, I don't know. It's weird. It just hasn't... It's been too cold, so. Suzanne?
I don't have anything.
And I don't have anything for tonight as well.
Steve, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
I attended the parks meeting last week. I guess Suzanne didn't get a package, but that's beside the point. We're going to have a joint meeting with city council, the first work meeting in February. Make sure everybody's on the same page, the parks and the city council.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the Parks Commission requested that they be added to a work meeting schedule, so we suggested we put it on our proposed for February.
Okay.
And they'll talk about the CIP, so we make sure everybody's communicating in the same language.
Okay. And we'll have them first on the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
Booster meeting Wednesday.
You want to add that? You just want to whisper?
No, I'm going to add that. This Wednesday, there's going to be a Booster Day volunteer meeting. And so if anybody is interested in helping out the Booster Day Committee, please show up for that.
Good.
I'll be there.
And with that...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Our meeting's adjourned.